I'd like to call this meeting of the mayor and council, January 7th, 2019, to order. If you'll please stand, pledge allegiance by me, and remain standing for the invocation by Mr. Jim Trippit.
Let's ease us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, the beginning of a new year. Father, as we look back, we thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed, Lord, on our city, our community. Lord, we know that it's you and you alone that are blessing us, and we just give you all praise, honor, and glory. And, Lord, as the new year dawns and is before us, we ask you to continue, Lord, to bless our city and community. Father, we pray that you'd help us to keep our eyes on you and all that we say and do, and that everything that we do would be glorifying to you in your sight, Lord. Father, we lift up this meeting to you. We lift up this mayor and city council. We ask you to bless them by God, give them wisdom, Lord, and as they debate the matters of the city, that everything that would be said and done would glorify you. Father, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Bring us to item number four, citizens' comments. Does anybody like to address the council about anything in particular? And please try to keep it three minutes. Mr. Trippit down here will be the stopwatch guy.
My name is John Crosby. I live at 114 Plantation Walk, Carrollton, Georgia. I take an exercise class at the Bonner Building, 11 to 12, three days a week, and about one day at least, out of them three days, when I'm coming down Clinic Avenue by Walgreens, somebody's in that left, right-hand lane going the opposite way, making a left turn. I know we got signs up at a red, but nobody seems to understand them, or they're too high up. I was wondering if we could get two white arrows pointing the other direction in that lane before somebody gets hit head-on. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll look into that.
My name's Michael McPherson. I live at 103 Chadwick Place, Villarica, Georgia. I see a few familiar faces up here. Most of you know my wife, city council in Villarica. I'm here today to address you regarding the animal ordinances that we're trying to get done in the county. About a year and a half ago, Leslie started a focus group to try to get a countywide ordinances that would be consistent throughout the county regarding animal treatment. And she got this summit because she was receiving several phone calls from some of the people in her ward about animal abuse, where animals were being left out, neglected, in terrible conditions. So, the thing is, is from this, she went out into her ward and started looking around and obviously advising people, would you please, you know, call animal control? They did call animal control, and there was really no enforcement that was done of it, or they would come out and they wouldn't come back again. And I'm trying to be brief, but I do want to get these points across. Just to give you an example, one night, one of her constituents called about 9:30 at night, and it was 12 degrees out, and the people had already called the animal control. And unfortunately, you know, they came out and did nothing. Well, fortunately, I was able to rescue the dog. And we did that. But since then, there's been no follow-up. If you read a quote from the newspaper, the current animal control person said that all they're interested in is the minimum. And if we start talking about our animals being out and being tethered 24/7, 7 days a week, all year long, on these minimum tethers, is unacceptable. Also, leaving animals out in 12-degree temperatures, like I had to do, and go out and try to rescue them. We need a county-wide policy. So, we're asking that you maybe get a focus group that maybe you can start looking at it so when it goes to the county commission, when they start to act on it, that you'll look at some of these ordinances and have an idea. The other thing is that I just wanted to show you briefly, I brought a prop to show you about the tethering. So, it's, you know, it's one thing to say, oh, you got this poor neglected dog, and this, that, and the other. But what I did here is to show you what tethering is. This is our dog Abby. We rescued her on the side of the road with a bullet in her, and her head split open, and that's another. But we rescued her. But there she is. She's about 45 pounds. This is the, this is her life. So, when I go home tonight and I put her on a tether, out in the yard somewhere, it's her life, right around in this area here, in their own extremitment. When I rescued that one dog that night, it had a chain on it that you pull trucks with. And it was attached, I'm sorry, it was attached to the collar by a coat hanger. It's pretty dismal sight. So, please get some ideas on this. And when it comes time to meet with the different cities, Leslie couldn't be here tonight because she's in temple. Thank you for.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Anyone else?
Chris Collins. I live at 116 Griffin Drive. Work at University of West Georgia. I know a lot of y'all, but I just want to say thank you to a group of people that I have noticed, and it really reflects in this, in this community. But I want to give kudos to Chief Joel Richards and his department for the job well done that they do for shop with the cop. Unfortunately, I know somebody that's in that scenario. And I was told that Christmas was able to happen because of what he does with his department. So, it's just, that's a citizen and a friend. I just want to say thank you, sir. Well, why not say, but you're here, Brad's here, you know, I see it. I mean, they get in the police car, y'all allow them to, I guess the city's okay with it, and they go down 27 with the lights, blue sirens and everything. It's awesome to see it on Facebook, you know, or wherever. But I just want to give you the kudos. That's really great what you do. Thank y'all.
Anyone else? See no one.
Good evening.
Evening.
Mayor, to the mayor, councilman, my name is Lori Bell. I stand before the council tonight to make a request from the Martin Luther King Coalition on behalf of the city's 26th Annual Martin Luther King Ecclesiastical Service. This service, we've held for 26 years in this city. And the council would like to give back to the city as a monument that states, "I have a dream for our community and also for our children to be a part of this so they know that we are all one, to bring unity for our community." Perfect. Okay, I thought you wanted.
And Sister Bell, if you could grab one of those agendas off that table right there, it'll show you.
I just came in. I'm sorry.
It's a nice little, nice little introduction. Right. That's right.
Anyone else? See no one. Move along. Item number five, minutes. I had a chance to reread the minutes, and anybody want to make a motion that we adopt, accept?
I move we approve the minutes from the December 3rd, 2018 minute, meeting.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please raise your hand. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Item number six, mayor and council announcements. Anybody got anything else, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to also turn my attention to the Carrollton Police Department, especially Joel Richards, for the construction of new food pantries that have been placed throughout our community and that are giving our citizens the opportunity to instantly give back and instantly help us fight hunger. I learned this morning that one in eight Americans struggle with hunger in this country. I'm not sure what our numbers are in this county, but I know they're probably going to go down because of good people like Joel. Also, on the MLK Day, I encourage everyone to participate in our potluck out at Legends West in honor of MLK. If you'd like to come out and volunteer and help serve food, make plates, bring food, it's from 12 to 2 on the MLK National Holiday at 215 Fourth Street. Would love to see all you guys there. Thank you.
I'd just like to, I got a call earlier today when a member in, a resident inside the community saw that we're looking at doing some changes in Safari Park, and they were asking to see if we could do a landscape buffer along 27 to help prevent and look at when car, when children get out of their cars at that park. Just making sure that there is a buffer between there and the street, and possibly looking at putting up a fence around that park just to maintain safety. Just another, we did do some traffic calming measures on Spring Street, which have been appreciated very much by the residents in that area. But just looking at other safety measures for people in that park was just one call that I got today.
To add to that, I also got a call from someone that's on Spring Street, maybe the same person. But apparently, the park, there's certain playground equipment that's in disrepair. I don't know if Tim and Peter, if y'all are aware of that or not, but may want to check it out, make sure it's up to snuff.
Go ahead, Tim. I'm sorry. Item number seven.
Friday, January 11th, is what would normally be the annual chamber dinner. They've changed it to the chamber ceremony. It's going to be heavy hors d'oeuvres, not dinner. There are tickets for the council. If any of you would like to go, I know that Met Lane has signed up, and we have some employees that'll go in your place if you choose not to go. But it is at City Station from 5:30 to 7:00. And then, just to remind you, we're now having a quarterly work session, and that will, the first of the year will be next Thursday, the 17th, at 5:30 on the third floor. Thank you.
Item number eight, approval of agenda items for consideration. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing nine. Everybody, everybody in favor of approving the agenda items as presented, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item number one, rezoning, 653 Austin Avenue. Ms. Studdard?
Thank you. And the first item on your agenda is a rezoning request at 653 Austin Avenue. This particular property is the site of an existing self-service storage facility. The property is currently zoned C3, making it existing non-conforming. And the property owner would like to add two additional buildings for an additional 100 units total. In order to do that, they've got to rezone to C2. The planning commission reviewed this request in December, and they recommended approval of the approval, I'm sorry, the approval of the rezoning request from C3 to C2, which is general commercial, with the following conditions. The expansion of the self-service storage in the C2 zoning district must adhere to the supplemental conditions in Section 2.04.15 of the UDO, including the landscaping buffers. The vehicle repair shop and self-storage hours of operation should be limited to the hours between dawn until dusk due to the nature of the business being close to residences. Number three, due to the lot having minimal tree canopy existing, any new construction on the premises will be subject to the general commercial landscaping requirements in 4.07 of the Unified Development Ordinance. And also, a sidewalk along Austin Avenue will be required.
Thank you very much. Is anybody here to speak for this rezoning?
My name is Sobhiam Alkaraz. And yes, that's exactly true. We're looking to add two more buildings, add on to the existing ones to add more units. And then also use that as, use half of that other shop as a car repair shop. And the conditions, I'm okay with that, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody here to speak against? Does anyone, y'all have any questions? Can we have a motion? Have a motion. Do we, can we get a second? Have a second, Mr. Wojciech. Thanks, sir. Any more discussion? All in favor of approving the rezoning as stated by the planning commission with conditions of them? Please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Resolution 01-219.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have before you a resolution that would amend the fire safety standards for the city of Carrollton. A while back, we passed a change to these standards that required that multifamily construction be made from non-combustible material. The state of Georgia then passed a state law that said we could not prevent builders from using wood as construction material for multifamily. You have before you two options, Resolution 01-2019 or 01-2019A. 19 would allow the use of wood, but it would have to be non-combustible wood. 19A would allow them to use normal, not fire-resistant wood. In either case, the buildings have to be fully sprinkled. The egress of the buildings have to be a two-hour fire rated. So, frankly, at a staff level, we are fine with 01-2019A. Our fire department's back here, and they could address that also. But they are, they are fine with eliminating the fire-resistant requirement in the wood and allowing the builders to use normal plain white lumber, as long as it is sprinkled and as long as it's, you know, has the two-hour rating on the egress. So, our recommendation is for Resolution 01-2019A. If you have questions for the fire department, they're here and can answer those.
Any questions?
Just, just for clarity, this is henceforth, correct, by moving forward?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Have a motion we adopt? Have a motion, second? Have a second? Any more discussion? All in favor of approving 02019-19A going forward on the fire code-resistant wood? Please raise your hand, yea or nay? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Chuck, Resolution 02-219.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was presented to the mayor and council last year as Resolution 18, 2018. At the meeting, there was a fair amount of discussion about this. And so, we have gone back and revised the resolution in ways I'll get to in a minute. But just to refresh your recollection, as originally presented, this was designed to do two things, to regulate special events and seasonal sales in the city, and really, the temporary signs that you see throughout the city that are associated with such special events and seasonal sales. So, as we originally presented the resolution, and some of this has carried over into Resolution 02, 2019. For example, it would limit the number of special events and seasonal sales for a single business location to four in a 12-month period, none of which could exceed 15 days. One of the changes we made, if you recall in the prior resolution, we had, we had done away with the provision that allowed as temporary special event signs, things like banners, pennants, streamers, and other things. We have since gone back to the language that currently exists in our ordinance, which allows those things, but only as a special event sign. The one exception to that are balloons. And as this is currently drafted, we would not regulate balloons, one way or the other, as a sign, whether it be temporary or permanent or otherwise. In terms of the special event signs themselves, similarly, they would be limited to a business location four times in a 12-month period, not to exceed 15 days. The signs, the temporary signs, would be limited to 50 square feet. There'd be no more than two per parcel, unless that particular business fronts on more than one public street, in which case you could have two on each public street. You're not allowed to put the temporary signs in the public right-of-way. If they are put in the public right-of-way, they'll be removed and impounded, and a $30 impound fee will be assigned to them. And we also increased the special event sign permit, or changed the permit fee to $30 per sign. There was an issue that came up today with regard, or a question that came up today with regard to auto dealers. And the question was, when they put temporary pricing information on the vehicle itself, so you drive by the dealership and you see $15,000 off or whatever, is that considered to be a temporary sign, and would that be subject to this ordinance? So, I prepared for your consideration some language that would specifically say that that temporary information that you would see displayed on the vehicle is not considered to be a sign, temporary or otherwise, and would not be regulated per this ordinance. That's probably a lot, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I hear it spinning. So, if there is, say, a gun show or a baby clothing sale, like there is sometimes out at the VFW, they can only put those signs temporarily on property that they have permission to put the property on? I guess that's what we're saying, right? And it has to be for the duration of that particular sale. Is that what we're saying?
And Erica will correct me if she disagrees with me. But there, you're not supposed to put signs on another premises to advertise something off-premises. I mean, that's considered to be a billboard under our ordinance. So, what this would be really designed for is, let's say, there's a particular business who's having a seasonal sale, and they want to put up some temporary signage for that seasonal sale. This is really what that is intended for. But it's to put a limit per location, four times a year, 15 days, no more than 15 days.
And they can only do it four times a year?
That's right.
Okay. Like semi-anual white sale or whatever. I totally get it.
Once a calendar quarter, you know, would be, well, it's not limited. I mean, I guess they could use them all in one quarter, but that was sort of the thinking.
Yeah. I got it.
Any more discussion?
I'm glad to see that we've come up with a good resolution for this, even with these updated changes. I know it's been something that we've been talking about for quite a long time. I was contacted by Bob Broomer in June of 2016, and he sent me Google documents full of pictures of, you know, just signs up all over the place. I know that our codes enforcement folks have been struggling with trying to pick up all of these. So, it's nice to see staff bringing together something to get, that will help tackle this problem. So, thank you to staff.
Have a motion we adopt is?
I'd like to make the motion, Mayor, with the change that Chuck mentioned to alleviate the car dealers with the issue of pricing in the windows. So, I move that we approve Resolution 02, 2019 with the following added as Section 5.04.05E6, and it states, "Information related to the pricing, discounts, financing, or incentives offered with respect to the sale of new or used automobiles or trucks that appear on a temporary basis on the windows or bodies of automobiles or trucks or on the storefronts of automobile or truck dealerships shall not be considered a special event sign and shall not otherwise be subject to regulation as a sign." So, it's the, it's the exact, it's the ordinance as written with that one change. So it's the, it's the exact, it's, it's the ordinance as written with that one change.
Can I get a second on?
Second.
Have a second.
That's right, if it's a temporary sign, it would be a special event, your grand opening, um, and you would be limited to fifteen days.
That's correct.
For what it's worth, that's where all the complaints were too. We just had a lot of complaints about all these, I call them yard type signs up and down Maple particularly. So we were trying to regulate that, the charge before, I think, was it a dollar? Eric, am I right to get? It was just a, it was such a small amount, it didn't matter, they could leave them up almost indefinitely and, and so, you know, this is where we had loads of complaints with all those, that type of sign up and down Maple particularly.
Any more discussion? Here you go, and I assume you're ready to vote. Have a motion, a second, for resolution zero two dash two one nine with, you want to say that one more time, Jim?
That was a lot. Libby says she's got it.
You got it? Yes, why I said. Uh, all in favor of approval, please raise your hand. Motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Item number four, resolution oh three two zero one nine, U D O amendment vinyl siding.
Thank you, uh, the next three agenda items uh, that you will see on your agenda this evening were part of a larger regi- resolution that you tabled in November, uh, that had, that had a consolidation of some uh, house cleaning items uh, that staff was requesting, and it also had some uh, more substantive things in there that have come up over the last several months. Uh, resolution uh, zero three two nineteen regards vinyl siding. What we've done, uh, is what you asked us, asked us to do, which was you wanted to vote on them individually. This particular resolution is a proposed amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to, that relates to the use of vinyl siding in single family construction. Currently, the Unified Development Ordinance prohibits vinyl siding in single family construction and staff was asked to reconsider this limitation. The attached resolution provides for limited use of this vinyl if it's forty-four mils or greater. Um, and uh, the planning commission actually reviewed this revision as part of that larger ordinance back in October. And so I can't give you a recommendation firmly from the planning commission, but I can say that original resolution, they recommended approval without vinyl siding, so um, I can give you that. If you have any questions, I'm here.
So is this for limited use or elimination of vinyl siding altogether?
This is for limited use, it's got to be a certain thickness, that forty-four mils or greater, uh, which really uh, kind of dictate, dictates the quality of what vinyl, vinyl siding. But it, it will allow the limited use of it, as long as it meets that standard.
Erica, I got a question. Um, you mentioned that staff was asked to reconsider this limitation and where did that come from?
Uh, Tim Grisberg can answer that.
I had requests from builders and then I had discussions with some of the elected officials about it. Oh, I want to make one point, uh, James Shockley's here, he's built either one or two houses on Cottage Hill in, what is the name of that subdivision, James?
It's uh, it's Cottage.
Cottage Hill Plantation. Uh, I don't care whether you approve this or not, but if you decide not to approve it, I need some relief for James. He has built the last two lots in that subdivision and they all have vinyl on the back and sides. And he, he assumed he could do that and he has put up at least one house. I need to be able to give him some relief, so I don't know where you're gonna go on this, I don't know if you're gonna allow vinyl or not allow vinyl, but I need, you know, when there's an existing subdivision that's building out that's had vinyl, I need to be able to give James some relief on that, because I hate to have him tear over the vinyl off that's there and put up hardy plank or whatever and that'll be the only homes in the neighborhood with that, so I do request that, uh, thank you.
Will we hear from anyone in the public, Mayor, on this one?
Yes, sir. That's all right, sometimes I get lost there.
I'm on short notice, um, I'm the assistant director for advocacy at the Vinyl Siding Institute and I am here in support of this amendment, um, in particular because i- in Georgia, throughout the state, there are a number of manufacturers that are members, as well as a number of suppliers in this county, as well as throughout the state. Um, setting aside the substantive quality of siding, um, I have to answer any questions, but we are here in support of this. Uh, we are also working in conjunction with the home builders of Georgia, as well as Atlanta, in support of passing broader legislation dealing with, with siding, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you gentlemen might have.
We need your name and address, and home address, please.
I, I'm happy to, would you like to provide a business card?
We, we need you to read it in.
Read it, Sir, Alex Fernandez, on behalf of the Vinyl Siding Institute, business address twelve oh one fifteenth Street Northwest, Washington DC, two zero 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 five.
So hello, so, and welcome. So you're saying you are in support of this amendment tonight that we're about to make? Or, or this resolution that we're about to pass the way it is right now, the way it's presented right now, you're in favor of it?
I can't speak on behalf of the other sections, but on the section dealing with vinyl only, as written with the amendments proposed, we would be in favor of it, correct?
Okay.
And it would provide the relief for your constituent.
Anybody else got a question?
Yeah, one of my um, biggest complaints that I've had from uh, folks in the city has been um, looking at what homes were built the way they look in, from mid two thousand, like two thousand and seven, right before the crash. And you see a lot of vinyl siding built without any windows, uh, straight down the sides and it's of lower quality than what this is. What you see in other communities, do you see um, uh, windows breaking up those walls to help to redefine that? Because I think from an architectural standpoint, that is one of our concerns, so how, how have you seen that approached in other places?
You, I mean, you can, that's a hundred percent aesthetic, it's possible to do it that way. Vinyl siding is um, generally considered a more affordable type of product, the type of cladding, so some houses are built with it purely on account of, of cost. Um, but if you go on our website, and I, I didn't bring any kind of um, collateral materials, but you can build it the way that you're describing and there's an entire um, architectural design around um, around vinyl. So it, yes, to answer your question, that can be done that way, it's just a matter of what the homeowner wants. And to bring it around full circle, we look at this as a property rate issue. If an individual wants, and as long as the material is quality and safe and approved for usage, our argument would, at least in part, be that they should be allowed to put up a material that is, is approved in other parts of the state.
And Rory, I know in the case of where I live, I live in a garden home and they are in close proximity. So one side of the home is open, but we don't have vinyl siding, we have hardy plank. One side's open, one side isn't, because the houses are so close together and we wouldn't want a person next door peering into our window. So it, it kind of alternates as it goes, so one side is completely uh, uh, p- hardy plank and the other side is open window. So I, I don't, I don't know if that helps you out or not, maybe that's the thinking behind some of that.
Yeah, and I think I got another question for Erica, I guess, um, just, thank you for your time. Um, from a, looking at how our standards are for windows on siding, I'd, I'd ask for staff to um, look at window glazing and percentage on walls um, for a recommendation on improvement for that if we do pass this vinyl siding piece.
Sure, currently we do have, uh, the only standard we have right now is for any wall facing a street, but we do have a standard for that and it's twenty percent. But yeah, we can look at it for the other, other walls.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Yes, sir. Go ahead, Ms. Dunn.
My name, my name is John Denny, I live on Hayes Mill Road in Carrollton. I got on the arm in the early seventies mistakenly thought that I could teach chemistry and physics and found that it, that was a, a very difficult profession to try to build kids. So I shifted to construction, I've been doing it ever since then. I built in the neighborhood of fifteen hundred dwelling units. I've never done one that I didn't make a mistake on. That's a lot of mistakes to learn from. I've seen all kinds of mistakes, but in regard to vinyl siding, there was a time, maybe twenty or thirty years ago, that uh, they did not use good UV protection and the vinyl would become brittle. That also was a period in which there was no requirement for house wrap. Whole different type of sheathing underneath the vinyl siding. Any, those, that situation is different now. The vinyl siding has much better UV protection, it lasts a lot better. And of course, you require house wrap. I would say if you're going to in, try to improve the quality of the endurance, you would be much better off to require a heavier house wrap, um, something like a Tyvek or type system. Uh, we're doing that on the library, uh, admin building that I'm helping them with. Uh, the difference, even on that six and a half thousand square foot, I mean, six and, yeah, six thousand five hundred square foot building, the cost is roughly double to use the higher quality um, house wrap. That doubling of price increases the price about six hundred dollars on that building. That's much more important than necessarily what goes on the outside. All of you are probably familiar with the courthouse and with this building right back out here. Those have brick or stone on it, which is probably the very best siding you can put on something. But they, they both have water issues, the water will go right through those things. It's what you put behind it that matters, that's the same case with anything. I have seen bad hardy type boards, I've seen certainly bad wood. Gerald can, Mr. Bird can tell you about some of that over at the West Side Pavilion. Any of it can be applied incorrectly. Vinyl is easier to apply, apply correctly than any, virtually any other type of siding. You, uh, when I spoke with you guys before about this, I mean, I could show you pictures of vinyl that's been there thirty plus years and it still looks good. And I'm, like the gentleman that spoke before me, if you're going to take away someone's right, I think you should have some real empirical evidence to, to support your decision. I can't find any evidence for that. I just, I think I speak in support of it, it's an appropriate type of siding. Um, it has, it's not appropriate for every use, but it's a, it's a, it certainly has its place and I would encourage you to allow that. Glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir. Anybody got any question?
In your opinion, the forty-four mils that we're proposing, where does that fall in the range of heavy duty siding to the cheapest siding you can find?
It's, it's the heavy.
Or, is it on the high side or low side or?
Yeah, it is the, I, um, I talked with Edward Pollard, who does my siding of all types and Edward's the best siding guy that I've ever used and I'm sure there's some other good ones. Um, he said that forty-four mils is the heaviest that he can buy at this stage. Uh, back uh, a few years ago, there was um, there was a, a thicker one that had the insulation already built onto it. But that was the only one that I know of. The gentleman here may can address that, but, but that's the, that's the heaviest um, normal one that I know of. The ones that um, uh, the lighter weight ones, I think would be forty mil, thirty, thirty-six to forty mil. Yeah, I mean, it, the UV protection is probably more important than the thickness, but the additional thickness does make for a straighter uh, look, so you don't have it as, you know, don't have the waviness in it that you would see on some of the cheaper ones.
John, I know you know where I kind of am with vinyl, and it's largely from an aesthetic standpoint. So looking at how we can break up those uh, walls with windows or other details, um, I'd love for your input on that as our staff goes through that, um, because I do value your opinion on those sorts of things. Um, so I think moving forward, um, I, I'd like to see if we could get your input on windows or um, setbacks or whatever on those walls to be able to help break up, just so there aren't just full walls of, of vinyl.
I think from an aesthetic standpoint, it is good to break, break up those long walls and in many cases, a window's an appropriate thing. In a few cases, like uh, like I know the, where uh, Mr. Bird lives, it's where you have patio homes or like the ones at Trayton Homes is building in Windmill Park. Uh, they have one high transom window on one side. So I think there's places where a window is not the appropriate thing to break it up, but um, there are other things you can do, you could put, you know, um, I don't know, I'm sure you could look at a, a number of different things, but uh, from an aesthetic standpoint, I think it would be good to do something there, uh, even if it's just a, you know, have something the size of a window that's a different pattern or something like that. We commonly do that, like in gables, e- even uh, where on a gable end, if you're spray foaming the entire building, you don't want to put a ventilation there. But we would commonly put something, either change a pattern on the siding or, or put a fake vent there or something like that to break it up. But, but from the standpoint of it being specifically being a window, um, it's just nice to have windows uh, as much as possible, but there are a lot of situations where it's inappropriate because like, um, where you're looking out into somebody's private courtyard on the courtyard houses. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about house wrap, is house wrap what goes underneath the, uh, I'm trying to understand construction jargon here, but house wrap goes underneath the vinyl siding, is that what house?
House wrap goes after you put the sheathing on, which is basically the outside, the covering outside of the studs of the framing, it's the outside part of the framing. Uh, you're now required to put a wrap, um, which is just a thin material that's um, more of a wind barrier, but it's also a vapor barrier if you use the right, if you use a heavier one. Um, and you, you're required to put that under, if I'm not mistaken, one of you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you're required to do that on any, any construction at this point, am I correct on that?
John, I, I, I would uh, like to uh, talk, speak to your uh, years of expertise. I think you've been building houses longer than uh, anybody up here's been a lot, so um.
I don't know about that, but, but.
Well, any other council members may, or not Jim?
Maybe not.
Oh, well, maybe not Jim and Walt, but the rest of us. What would make you happy tonight? What would make, what would make you smile tonight, based on what we have up here and based on your expertise? Because I think you represent a lot of builders in our community and I know you're very well respected around our community. I hear nothing but good things and I know that from experience, you.
You know, you, you need a variety of different things, um, and I think the more important thing is you, you're wanting to protect the citizens against unscrupulous builders and contractors, uh, as well as um, I, I guess that's the, that's the main thing that I would see from the standpoint of the requirements that you would place. But uh, there's an appropriate use for lots of different things. Uh, I frankly would never use masonite, which is approved. I would only use wood in certain circumstances. I would consider vinyl superior to either of those products generally. Um, I, I don't have, I don't guess I have something that I would just say, you just need to do this. You know, you, you need good inspection on anything that you use, but appropriately installed. Uh, I would say my order of preference would be brick or stone would be the hot, then a hard stucco, which is real concrete stucco. Um, and uh, then I would put a, a hardy plank or, or that type of s- material and, and vinyl equal, depending on the circumstances. Uh, some of them, one's more appropriate and some, one more appropriate than others. Um, and that's, that's kind of the order, but you, you have to understand too that, you know, you're talking about on a, on a house, maybe twenty-five thousand dollars to put brick and that gets awfully expensive just to cover the siding. So it's, it's, you know, we don't all. We don't all drive large SUVs that are... That protect everybody, which we can't afford to.
Right, right. So, this particular...
I don't know if that answers your question, but I don't have a definitive answer.
But this particular grade that we're talking about tonight, is that... Are you satid over that particular grade?
Yeah. I... It's not substantially more expensive than the thinner ones, and I think that's the best vinyl you can get. So, I don't see a problem in specifying that as a grade.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. John. Anybody else want to touch on this subject?
James Shockley. I live in Champion Drive. Like John, I guess I've held many hats. I actually have an engineering degree. Had the fortune of building anywhere from a million-dollar house all the way down to a $90,000 house. I've always taken the same pride in, no matter what I'm building, is doing it the best that I can do. You know, when we're talking about brick or hardy plank or vinyl, you know, my personal house has hardy plank on it, rock on it, and brick, but I've seen houses in Oak Mountain Gull that are totally hardy plank and not be installed correctly and had to be taken down and then reinstalled correctly. So, I think that when we come down to what kind of product we're using, I think that it really comes down to the craftsman that you're using and, you know, how it's being installed. If you don't install brick right, we've seen what happens with the courthouse. If you don't install hardy plank right, it can leak behind it. Same thing can happen with vinyl. You know, I've built well over a hundred and something houses, but I flipped well over two hundred and something houses when the market crashed. The difference being is, what you didn't learn when you were building, you did when you started flipping, because you were taking apart the houses that not one builder built, but probably two hundred different builders. So, you've seen the mistakes that they made, and then it improved you as you went along. When I went into Cottage Hill, I never intended to break any rule, and I put vinyl siding up. Every house in there is vinyl siding. They have brick fronts and vinyl siding, and some of them are all vinyl siding. On this deal here, I support the forty-four mils. It's a good vinyl siding, and it will take away the waviness that goes down the side that you see on some of them. But, you know, when you're talking about quality, you can take a vinyl... You can take a hardy plank and you can paint it, and if the painter puts too much water in the paint just to get by cheap enough, then you're probably going to have to paint it again in a year. If the seals are not done right, then there's water's going to get behind it. If they didn't put up the house wrap, then it's going to rot in the wood. You know, that's just my personal opinion on what I've seen on things. I support the new amendment, and that's basically all I have to say. And on the issue of breaking up, you know, a lot of times we do, if we've got a whole side that's vinyl, we'll put a transom window, a 103 transom window that normally goes like in a bathroom. But you've got to understand that if you've got a room that is ten by twelve and it's looking out onto somebody else's yard, you know, like in Gerald's case, I flipped a house in his neighborhood. Those are very garden-style. If you've got a window in certain locations, you're going to be looking right in somebody's living room or in somebody's bathroom. So, that doesn't... You know, that doesn't work in those situations, but, you know, putting scallops on houses, vinyl scallops, that works. Now, you wouldn't want it down a side, but you... We put it in eaves and stuff like that, but adding like a transom window down the side does break it up a lot. But that's just my opinion on this, and I appreciate any help.
Thank you, Mr. John. Anybody else? Any more questions from the council? Motion? I'll make one then. Resolution 032-019, vinyl siding that we approve as written in the memorandum. Have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of approving resolution 03-219 vinyl siding amendment? Please raise your hand. All opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Studdard, resolution 042-019. I'm having a hard time with the 19. It's... I can't get clicked over. I'm sorry.
The next resolution is another one of those items that was part of that larger resolution that you reviewed in November and tabled. It's a proposed amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance as it relates to minimum house size for single-family structures. Currently, the Unified Development Ordinance requires 1,250 square feet of heated floor area. The attached resolution proposes reducing this to 900 square feet. The Planning Commission did review this in October, and it was part of that large amendment, but they did recommend approval of this piece of it. If you have any questions, I'm available.
I have a question for Tim Grizzard, since he's the sponsor of this. Why do you want to reduce the square footage, Tim?
Oh, it's friendly to reduce the cost of a small home. I spoke to the Realtors Association a few weeks ago, and they actually applauded this and we talked about it. What we're seeing... I've got a very successful daughter in Atlanta, and she lives in 700 square feet. I don't particularly want to live that way, but she and her husband love it. It's laid outright. It's very luxurious, and it works well for them. So, the cost of construction is so high now, it's hard to do any home for under $200,000. This would bring that cost down. I don't know that it'll be exactly linear, because there are going to be some fixed costs, but it would reduce that cost. We're just seeing a lot of retired people that don't want so much floor space. I do want to stress, this is not what's called a tiny home. That would be maybe 300 square feet, and I don't support those at all. I think that's a fad that's going to, you know, blow through here and go away, but this is just a smaller structure, and it would allow people to do that. And so, again, we've... And it's something... John is a close friend of mine. It's something he and I've talked about, and I just... Would allow some people to get in a home at a lower price and still maintain quality.
Erica, would this be limited to the R8 category we were looking at?
No, this would be basically any single-family home. So, it's in the design standards for single-family homes, so that would basically be townhouses and single-family detached, regardless of the district.
Regardless where it is.
Right. Now, R8 would be a compatible district for it, but this would be in any district.
So, if somebody had a half-acre lot and their neighbors had 3,200 feet either side, they could come in and put a 900-square-foot house in between?
Right, but if you're in a subdivision, typically you've got covenants that...
Restrictions, yeah.
...that they design standards, and that's worth it.
Let's hold on. Yeah, let's hold on. Let's tell the whole story now. Those covenants traditionally only give for 20 years. They usually expire. Now, okay? So, hypothetical that the mayor just said could happen.
It absolutely could happen. So, any single-family... Any single-family lot would allow that 900-square-foot single-family construction. Yes.
Covenants can also be renewed. Yeah, they can.
In our downtown area, you see a lot of those 900,000 sort of square-foot homes. What did I say? Oh, yeah, sorry. Not... Maybe not. Maybe not right now. 900 to 1,000 square-foot homes. Where do you or maybe builders foresee those sorts of home... Newer homes getting built? On larger lots or more in the dense... denser communities?
Well, if it's a new lot, typically a builder's not going to do a half-acre lot with a 900-square-foot home. I mean, that's typically not what you would see. I'll actually use John as an example, since he's here. When they originally brought Windmill Park through, I don't know if you recall, but they had actually proposed doing a smaller home section of that development. Now, I know a lot of that's dictated by the market, and I'm not sure if they're going to continue with that basically plan, but that was something that they had originally discussed, because they know that there's a market, a little market for it. And I can't remember, John, how many did you propose originally of those smaller homes?
We proposed fifty... No more than 50% of the smaller homes, and we do still have some plans to do some smaller homes.
Some...
I don't remember that we had a minimum square feet, but I agree with Grizzard that what we have seen in the tiny homes would be that somebody's all excited about it, and they put one up, and then even the guy that manufactures them told me that typically what he could see in about a year, year and a half, they would sell those. But 900 square feet is... The challenge is to keep something nice and still provide the types of housing that's needed for all types of people in your community. It's... I think there's an appropriate place for them. I wouldn't say you want to run limit.
Mm-hmm.
John, can I ask you a question? I'm sorry.
Sure.
This is an unfair question, but what do you think the cost would be for building a 900-square-foot home at today's prices?
What would the cost be?
Yeah, randomly, you think.
Well, it's a little more expensive per square foot to build something small than it is something larger, and of course, certainly you can build a box-type larger home.
Wrong question. I don't mean the cost, the sales price of a 900-square-foot.
Okay. I would say excluding the lot, you're talking about certainly in excess of 100, probably $150 a square foot, which would put you at what? $130,000, $40,000? And then unfortunately, lots have gotten expensive enough so that you... You're probably above $150 and below 200 on a well-done quality one.
Probably 150, minimum, probably 150.
It would be hard from... I can't imagine getting into even a 900-square-foot house for 150, especially in a new development where you had to pay the cost of developing a lot unless you just found an odd lot somewhere that you could buy cheap.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
I would say, to me, the more important thing would be to do things that maintain the quality and, of course, to try to keep a balance of the types of structures that kind of fit your current demographic needs. As I've spoken with Mr. Grizzard before, if you've built... Overbuilt with a 900-square-foot houses, you're going to invite a different demographic group to your community and then rather than just providing for the community as it exists and as it grows.
A question for Gerald.
Oh, yes, sir.
The three houses we're proposing to build with the NSP money?
Yes, sir.
What's the square footage on those?
Tim, that might be a better question for you, because I can't remember. I'm sorry. Could Walt ask that question one more time? Because I heard half of it, and I only know what you asked, because I didn't know what you asked, but could you ask for the audience, if you don't mind, please, one more time?
The three houses that we're proposing to build over on Lambert Street with NSP money, that we've come back in and adjusted, how many square feet are on those?
Okay, Tim.
I don't know.
Oh, you don't know?
They're at least... Do you know?
Twelve, yeah.
I would say they're at least 1,250, because that's what ordinance would require.
Right, right.
So, I guess what I'm getting to, if we pass this 900, is that far enough in size that it could scale down?
I think we need to stay at the 1,200 for the sake of the timeline. That's going to set us back a little bit more. Tim, would you agree with that? We can keep moving forward as is now.
We're out to bid on it. It meets the budget. You know, it fits the lot, so I wouldn't think there'd be any reason to reduce those. And look, I want to stress too, I don't have strong feelings about this, so don't think that... I mean, not... I mean, I work for y'all. I just... This came up, and it was one of those old business items that needed to be addressed. You don't turn it down, turn it down. I did, you know, I did do a little research on it, and it seemed like something that could get a few houses out there not so expensive now. I don't see how you can build anything for 100, 200,000, but, you know, I don't have strong feelings about this one way or the other.
Well, I think it's going to be good news for hard-working, low-income families and first-time buyers. I myself, I live in, what, about 1,500 square feet? That's too much for me. I don't even use all the rooms in my house, so I think it's great. And I know I'm not the only single person out there who lives alone. So, I think it's good news for low-income families.
How do we address your concerns about what's the... As far as the lot next to a 5,000-square-foot house? Is that incumbent on the covenant to take care of that?
I don't... I mean, from what I'm understanding, maybe I'm wrong, but if we pass this, then there's nothing to prevent a builder or developer coming in and creating quarter lots and put up 900, creating a subdivision of 100 houses at 900 square feet. Am I right, Chuck? I mean, that hypothetically could happen if we pass this ordinance?
What's our... What's our smallest single-family... Is it R10?
Right now, it's R10. We're proposing to add an R8, but not put it on the map, so they would have to come to you.
They would have to be zoned for it. So, I mean, they could... Let's say that it was, you know, an area that's R20 or whatever. They wanted to do four quarter-acre lots, they'd have to come in and get the rezoning. I mean, that would be one check on it. But yes, in theory, if it was zoned R10, you know, they could do four houses or four lots per acre and if this passes and put 900-square-foot houses on them.
That'd only be like 10,000-plus square foot per lot, though.
From a building on a lot next to a 3,200-square-foot house, I'd say the market would help to find what the lot... What the house next door would actually be, and they probably wouldn't be building a 900-square-foot house. It would just seem out of place.
Right.
Well, any more discussion? Have a motion?
So...
Yea or nay?
I wanted to... Who made the motion?
Do we have a motion?
I wanted a second to read it, or... Oh, I move. Yeah, I'm sorry. I move we approve resolution 04-2019 from the current required square footage of 1,250 square feet to or down to 900 square feet.
Have a motion. Have a second. Have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution 04-219, minimum single-family home size from 1,250 to 900 square feet? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Studdard, resolution 05-2019.
This is the final resolution that was part of that larger resolution that you reviewed in November. This particular resolution relates to a proposed amendment of the Unified Development Ordinance when it comes to sidewalk widths in both residential and commercial developments. This particular amendment proposes that sidewalk widths for residential developments be five feet in width, and then for commercial, six feet in width. We just needed some clarification. That's why you're seeing this one. The Planning Commission reviewed this at their October meeting, and this was part of that larger resolution that they made a recommendation for approval on. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Erica, what's the national standard for sidewalk? Is it five feet?
It depends... It actually depends on where you are and the location. In urban areas, it actually gets even larger than six feet.
I like it.
Yeah, four's a little tight.
Four is tight? Is that what we have now, four feet?
We've got some old fours, but most of them pretty much gone to five or better. It's hard to walk with two people down side by side on four feet.
Meet somebody, and it gets awkward. Yeah. I like a wide sidewalk. That's good.
Any more discussion? Anybody got any questions?
I want to ask John. John, the sidewalks in your... I was out there yesterday looking around. The sidewalks in your subdivision, are those sidewalks or is that... What is that like going up the berm and... What is that? Is that a sidewalk?
It's potentially a...
That's what I thought.
It's made it basically a sidewalk now, and it's 10 feet wide. Five feet wide is what we had planned. Four feet wide should be...
Yeah. That looks really good. I like that.
Any more questions? Motion to approve or deny? I'll make a motion. We adopt. Resolution 05-219, minimum sidewalk requirements? Second. All in favor of adopting resolution 05-219? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thanks, sirs. Everybody must want to get to the football game. Item number seven, request for Martin Luther King monument placement, Safari Park. Rory?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up Lord Bell again, please, to talk about this once more, please. Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to bring up Lori Bell again, please, to talk about this once more, please, thank you so much.
Good evening again, gentlemen. Okay. As I said before, my name is Lori Bell. I stand to represent the Martin Luther King Coalition for the City of Carrollton. I've sponsored this service for 26 years for the City of Carrollton. It first started at First Baptist Church on King Street. Moved to, and it has grown throughout the years and I think many of you have attended the services. So, throughout the years, I have been contemplating and thinking about things that we can give back to the community. Each year, this service gives back to the community. We've given to the soup kitchen, we've also given to the Boys and Girls Club, we've given to students that have been underachievers and have made great strides in their progress in school. So, this year, I wanted the committee to do something special for our, to give back to our community and that's a monument in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. And this monument is for the city, for everybody to enjoy. So, that's what I want to present.
Just, that's a great idea, I'm just curious, who's going to pay for it and what does it look like? How big is it? Do you have a sketch or anything or has it been designed?
It is being designed now. It is going to be paid for by the MLK Coalition, Whosoever Will Christ-Centered Bible Church, and also by sponsors. It's going to be six feet. Can't tell you exactly how many inches, but it's, do you have a picture that I sent to you? You don't have it, you will. And my hat wouldn't work in here, but I can get a picture.
It looked like a granite wall, kind of, yeah, it's a small piece, not too huge and it's got the "I have a dream" quote on it and that's that nature.
Is it like a base and then like with a large base with the speech?
Yep.
And then with, with just his head or a statue?
Sketches of his face on there with his quotes on there that says Martin Luther King Jr.
And it looked like a black granite piece, something like that, yeah.
And is it just a gift to the city or do y'all, do y'all want to place it in a particular location?
The plan is, we want to give it to the city. Idea was to give it to, place it in Safari Park.
I don't mean to, I don't mean to make a joke, but we had a gentleman who wanted to give us a train and he came in here every month for almost a year wanting to give us a train, but that's why, I'm just curious.
The purpose of this monument, there are lots of people, children, adults, that can't afford to go to Washington to see a monument of Martin Luther King Jr. That don't have the transportation to go to Atlanta, to go to Alabama, to actually see a monument of Martin Luther King Jr. And I thought this was a great, personal, from my heart, for our city to have.
I would agree and I think working with our parks folks, with Kent Johnson about exact location over there would be, would be great, Peter, you too, just to figure out where that would be. But, yeah, I love this idea and I think it'll be a great monument for the city.
And I have also spoken with a monument company in our city to get that for me and she's working on that now.
What about the base? Is it going to sit on a base?
Sit on a base.
Oh, sit on a base, okay. That's what I'm, I mean, people, what I'm talking about is vandalism or somebody knocking it over, is it going to be secured?
It's going to be secured, yes. Yes.
Yeah. Sister Bill?
Sir.
Yeah, I like that idea. I think what the council wants to do is see what it looks like first, just told me just now. But I think, this is, this was my initial response to you. I think a playground, I know when I take my kids to the playground, we climb all over everything and act like a bunch of wild animals out there, especially at the safari playground, it's a lot of fun. I think a playground is a great place to put a monument, but I think this particular monument concerns me. I think playgrounds are fun and they're good, I like to have fun, you know me. But I think we should maybe look to put it in a more, I guess, a more, a more serious place that has a little bit more reverence for what he stood for. Maybe even on the grounds of City Hall somewhere. And I think it will become a destination and people are going to come and want to take pictures in front of it and if you put it in, put it somewhere other than a playground, maybe two, and I'm not against putting it in a playground. I think wherever you put it, that's fine, but I'm just seeing kids climbing on this thing and it could flip and, you know, and met his concerns about vandalism. But maybe we need to think about where we want to put it. A place with a little more reverence than a playground because I don't think his dream deserved, it's not a plaything, it's serious and it's something that we all need to, absolutely. It's something that we all need to reflect upon and his dream is not for blacks or whites or anybody else, it's for everybody. And until we realize that, we're going to keep being on that same old treadmill of where we are now. So, I think if we put it someplace else, it'll be much more respected than at a playground.
Your suggestion?
I'm thinking here on the grounds of City Hall, somewhere where it could be more visible, somewhere where it could also be taken, taken more seriously. That's just, those are just my thoughts.
Good idea.
I just see kids climbing on this. I mean, when I was a kid, I would have climbed and stood on it.
And it's not going to be directly inside of the park? You know, where people rent that, what is that, the old city gym?
Oh, okay, yes, yes.
Ms. Bell, would you be opposed? I mean, I think nobody's opposed to this. We just want to see more about what you're proposing to put up.
Sure, I can do that.
I mean, we're, I mean, you talked, you and I chatted and we would just like to see some kind of design, you know, some specification, I mean, six foot, two foot.
Sure.
You know, just.
I can do that.
Where it's going to go to Gerald's point, so we've got a lot to talk about here.
Yeah.
Which is not going to get us off the plane.
So, it's not something I think we need to really be voting on tonight because we just don't have enough information in front of us yet?
Okay, okay.
Is that, we're not trying to, is that anybody's sentiment or?
I totally agree, yeah, I was about to say, as a co-sponsor, I move we, if you're okay with this, that we table it until the month of, what's the next month, February? And we can look at it again and if you come back with a more pictorial kind of illustration of what it could possibly, and I know you already have that, that would, I think, put us a little more at ease and we can move forward in finding a place for it. So, I think it deserves a very prominent and important place.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your.
Because that's my desire, is that it would be respected.
Absolutely.
And it's a lesson for our children as well as our community and a piece of history to be left for our city and our kids as well.
Thank you for doing this too, I think you all should be applauded, I mean.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for your time. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
So, Gerald, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, that we table this agenda item, I don't know the item number here. Item seven on the agenda, the request for Martin Luther King Jr. Monument Placement in Safari Park until our February meeting at which we request the viewing of any supporting documents, including an illustration or rendering of what this monument could look like.
No problem.
Where we would like to put it. Oh.
Thank you for your considerations.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor of the table of the motion, please raise your hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Item number eight, Mayor Pro-Tim Appointment. Got your name by there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It, you're, in January of 2016, I believe, y'all passed a resolution that stated that you would select the Mayor Pro-Tim in January of each year. So, does that time again? Thank you.
This time I'd like to open nominations.
Going to nominate Jim Waters.
Have a nomination, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any more nominations? Like the closed nominations? Do I get a vote on a closed, Chuck? I can't.
No, you can close nominations.
I will close nominations. All in favor of Jim Waters serving as Mayor Pro-Tim for the year 219, please raise your hand. Motion carries, thank you. All opposed? Congratulations, Jim. Mr. Triplet, 2019 qualifying fees and schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 2019 city election coming up, the seats up for election, Mayor, Ward Three and Ward Four. We need to ratify the qualifying fees for these seats in the 2019 election. Georgia code currently provides that the qualifying fees for each seat would be 3% of the gross salary paid in the preceding year. For the mayor's position, $180, for each city council member, $108. And so, with the Carroll County Collection, Collection, Election Office will be advertising these prior to February 1st, somewhere around January 29th. And one point I'd like to make to you, I incorrectly identified the elections manager in the memo. I used the note template and it was Leslie Robinson. In fact, the manager now is Greg Rigby and I apologize for that oversight. But submit those fees for your ratification.
Have a motion, gentlemen?
I got a question. When is the qualifying period?
They have not set the exact calendar yet. It will either be probably the last week in August or the first week in September and as we did at last election, it will be Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of that respective week.
Any more questions? All in favor of, we get a motion in a second on this, Chuck, or just a vote?
Uh, yeah, I'd do it by motion.
Have a motion, we approve the qualifying fees, schedule. Motion, I have a second. Have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries, thank you very much. Item number 10, results of Georgia DOT speed evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tommy Holland is not here tonight, his sister was operated on today in Atlanta and I apologize. So, I'm not going to have the level of information that he had. We asked Georgia DOT, at the council's request, we asked Georgia DOT to evaluate the speed limits on Cedar Street and the speed limits on the section of Rome that is north of Spring. The section south of Spring toward the square is already 25 miles an hour. The section north of Spring going, again, north is 35 miles an hour. They came back and said this current speed limits are appropriate. We did not take no for an answer and we went to our traffic consultant and I apologize, I don't recall his name either, but he's the one that's done all the traffic studies on Bankhead and him evaluated also and he gave us the same answer. So, I apologize for not having that report for you tonight, I can make that available to you. I know Mr. Hall has asked to see it, we can post it on the website. We just would like to say this and y'all heard me use this term before. Traffic is not an intuitively obvious issue and people think they're speeding when there's not necessarily speeding. I know my own mother is one of the most notorious critics of traffic in Cowie de County and I thank God that she lives over there and not in the City of Carrollton, so I don't have to hear from her. But it's just, it's one of those things where we rarely make anybody happy with traffic issues. If we were to respond to every request and put stop signs everywhere they want and traffic signals everywhere anyone wants and speed bumps anywhere, anywhere someone wants, they will literally be everywhere. So, what we have done is a policy is to hire consultants or in the case when it needs to be, DOT, have them evaluate it and we do what the consultant says. That's what we did on Spring. We had Spring from 27 evaluated all the way through Brown, all the way over to Stewart and we implemented where they recommended those changes and some people are thrilled and some people are not happy. But if we don't follow what the consultants say, we will be constantly chasing our tails and putting up measures that may not be appropriate. So, that's my spiel on it. I will be glad to get you more data when Tommy is back. Thank you.
This is basically just for information, we're not voting on anything on this, I mean, just.
No, sir, I, again, y'all directed the staff to have this done and that we have done that.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else anybody needs to bring in front of this body? Have a motion, we adjourn. Motion in a second.
Second.
Second. This meeting is adjourned.